Okay, there's a planning board meeting for October twenty ninth, twenty twenty five. We're gonna stand and say a bunch. Kim Smith?
Here.
Garrett Buckner? Tony DeCianus? Debbie Friend? Debbie Gable is excused still.
Hi, good evening, everybody. I just wanna clarify some things for people, and I will do this every single meeting. We're in the council chambers. The nameplates that are in front of us are not the nameplates of the people sitting here. Uh, we're sitting in the council, uh, seats. Um, I'm Chuck Clark from Development, Scott Hayes, Steve Baylen, Kristy Cooper. Uh, we're all part of the process here. Whenever we speak, we will say our names clearly. Uh, but for those, so there's no confusion, we are not the people whose nameplates represent you here. And then again, this is the planning board, so anybody who's speaking, please limit your, uh, conversation to, uh, three minutes, please. And keep it specific to, uh, the site plan that you may be speaking for or against. Other than that, thank you for coming tonight, and then Smith, it's all yours.
Okay, so the first thing on our agenda is the approval of the minutes from the September meeting. Did everybody have a chance to review them?
Yes.
Yes. Any questions or corrections? And if not, then I'll.
I said no, not that, uh.
Okay, so if not, then I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Friend motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, and the next item on the agenda is from Janine Bish. Uh, open, request to open a va- a bakery at twelve forty-five Abbott Road. Did you wanna come forward, Miss Bish? And tell us what your plans are?
So we can, I'm using, um, previous used buildings. That was a restaurant. It was a diner, um, Teddy's Diner, and I'm Nikki's Diner. Um, the only work we're planning on doing is cosmetic right now, painting, updating, um. And then hopefully starting with custom cakes, cupcakes, cheesecakes. Eventually some breakfast sandwiches with homey business.
So it'll be like a traditional bakery, okay?
Do you buy the place, Miss?
We're leasing.
All right, Jared Buckner, I'm glad to see something going here. Questions, and I'll probably always bring this up every time my business is open, in terms of garbage disposal. I know it's a huge, uh, parking lot in the back.
Yeah.
Um, have you guys mapped out the garbage disposal? How do you gotta do that?
Discuss with the owner. He uses the back. There's, um, a parking lot, and then behind it, there's an open area that he uses to park, and we could have a small dumpster back there.
Okay, and, uh, what, what, what will be your hours of operation?
So, right now, it's an estimated seven AM to two PM, and then once a month, we do cake decorating classes, which will be held in the evenings.
Yeah, I've seen it. That's pretty cool. Um, and that's just that Monday through Friday, or Monday through Sunday?
So initially, we'd be open four days a week, expanding as we go on, when we get staff and stuff like that. Initially, it would be four days a week, but during the week, a couple weekdays in the weekend.
Awesome, and last question, signage, are you gonna get new signage out there, or?
Yeah, so we have two companies coming out to give us an estimate for signage on the front of the building where the awning is, and then on the side, there was like a little turpette out.
Thank you.
This is Debbie Friend. Are you gonna have people come in and sit and eat also?
Yes, we will, yes.
I do have a question, one more question. I'm sorry, Jared Buckner, and this is to our code enforcement department. Um, in the, uh, this assessment form, a question.
Talking about the seeker?
The seeker? It's an existing building. She didn't need to fill it out, but James gave it to her.
Okay.
No, we weren't at the we weren't at the counter and changing.
Okay, so, so then disregard this then.
Existing building, yes.
Okay, all right, never mind, thank you.
And I just had a question in reference to the, the classes, so what kind of classes are they gonna be? Are they gonna be the Wilton? Cake decorating classes?
Um, so I would, normally I pick a design of a cake, and then everyone comes, the cake's already made, they're frosting their accessory pieces, and then we walk through kinda like a painting class, but it's cake. So we, I walk everyone through step by step, and then we all ultimately come up with the same cake with their own little unique spins, and then everyone gets to take their cake home.
So it's not the, the Wilton classes?
No.
Okay, all right, so as far as your equipment, do, do the students have to purchase their equipment or everything?
It's all included with the price. They're frosting their tools, they get aprons that they get to wear, stuff like that, so.
When would these classes be? You said Tuesday?
Um, usually, uh, the plan is going to be like once a month, so it would just depend on, and it would probably be like dinnertime or a little after. So, and they're, I would estimate in about two hours.
Danny, Chuck Clark from Development, uh, just a quick question. I'm assuming that you'll have appropriated liability with students taking these classes? Protective gear for hands and things like that?
Yes, there won't be any sharp tools or anything like that. It's just food coloring and frosting.
Thank you.
That's why I asked the question, Chuck, 'cause I'm, I took cake decorating to action. And so that's why I was asking, do we need our own equipment?
No.
Yeah.
Everything's prepared, and they just put it together.
Now, the question I have, Kim Smith, um, the question I have is how soon are you gonna be able to open? So when you go and get your permit, you know, you do take care of everything with the clerk's office?
I don't know if it's realistic, but our goal is December first.
Okay.
He gets approval. She needs a business registration through the clerk's office.
But by before the holidays, you wanna be open before the holiday?
I mean, the cute Santa kids, I feel like everybody needs one. Absolutely.
Any other questions from anybody? Okay, so if we're all set, then I'll entertain a motion. Oh, yeah, thank you. Is there, thank you, so we can open it up now, open up the public hearing to see if anybody has any questions? Any residents or neighbors? Okay, so we can close the public hearing. Nobody is present, so I'll entertain a motion to approve.
The Santa's motion.
Friend second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? Motion carried, so. Gentlemen.
Yeah, Steve Baylen, code enforcement, totally, Scott said, you need your business registration in room two fifteen, um, lot fix three, sir, one of them in there.
And then assign permits and stuff like that.
Yeah, sign for minutes.
Okay, perfect. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, the next agenda item is David Guisana Architects. And it's for a site plan approval for fifteen ninety Abbott Road.
Hello. Hello, good evening. I'm David Giudiana, uh, Giudiana Architects, representing the owner of fifteen ninety Abbott, um. We're proposing to build a thirty-six by sixty-eight approximately, uh, single story wood frame addition, uh, the service, um, the existing business that's there, um. Site development will also include, um, some additional, um, sort of reclamation of, uh, a grass area to, uh, fulfill the uh, eighty percent maximum coverage requirement, uh, so we meet the side yard, rear yard coverage requirements, um, so which we uh, originally intended on going and giving variances to build it slightly bigger and slightly farther back, but now we've chosen to, to, to scale down a bit uh, so as to make it conform with the planning completely.
Kim Smith, um, chair, I have had a couple of questions. Um, the, is the business is currently operating? Are you the, the business owner? If you could come forward and identify yourself? And what's your name, sir?
Najib Burman.
Okay, um, Mr. Burman?
Yes, sir.
No, okay, Mr. Burman. Um, you're currently in business now? So what do you do? It just, it says retail sales. What, what do you sell?
Sell the international bru- uh, bruises, you know, grocery.
Okay, so it's just mainly food? Okay, so what is it that you're expanding to include? With, with this, what is it that you're gonna?
They say, sa- same business, same spot, you know? The one that we have is a, a small, when I have like Delafree, I, I start what I build the stock. This is what I, you know, when we wanna make it bigger.
Okay. So you're gonna sell the same item?
Same item.
Okay, you just need more space, okay? And so this, I just wanna be clear today, so this is basically the expansion here?
Yes, and it wraps behind the original building as well.
This blue?
Yes.
Okay. So nothing is changing. This is the, the current building?
Correct.
And then we're gonna add on like a wing in the back?
Correct.
Okay, and then that is gonna be storage or just expanding the retail space?
But, well, uh, but also storage, like where the overhead door would be, so that would, uh, be taking deliveries and storage there. And then the, the rest of it would be for additional retail space.
Okay, all right.
This is Mona Abdullah, I have a question, um, will the storage be separate from the, where the customers will be?
Yes, yes. Hard structured wall, correct, yes.
So, it's, um, this is Kim Smith again, so the, the back of the building, you're, um, gonna knock out a wall? And attach the new one, or?
Actually, no, right now, there's, uh, an existing exterior door, uh, so we're gonna maintain that door, and those pass through that into the addition.
Uh, Jared Buckner, um, got a few questions, but, uh, first question, I know you mentioned the dimensions, can you remit, or what's the height of it?
Well, it's a single story, um, I think it's on the No, the total to the ridge of that is, I'm, I'm pretty sure it's, it's fourteen feet.
Okay, and so the reason I'm asking is so, behind that, I Google mapped it, behind it, there's a resident that lives back behind the structure with a, a stockade fence, and if I'm a resident, I'll be pissed because now you're blocking my view of everything back there, so it's covered up. And so I was just wondering, I don't know if the, the, the resident is here or not, if they oppose, I mean, if they didn't oppose, obviously, it's a good thing, right, but, um, if I was a resident, I would just really be pissed because now you're blocking off the site and everything, plus with storage, um, is this gonna be food, dry food, what kind, what kind of storage is it?
Yes, but all internal to the building, I mean, there's no exterior storage.
So, right, it's gonna be inside, right?
Perishable?
Per, thank you.
Combination of dry goods and vegetables.
And it's gonna be sealed, right, because there's all kind of wildlife and everything running around there, and every road is full of those.
Again, all interior to the building.
Okay, and, um, with deliveries, again, if I'm a resident, now you have emissions coming from whatever truck is, is delivering this stuff, and I-
There are no more deliveries that would be greater than what currently exists. I'm sorry if I interrupted you.
Uh, no, you're good. So, okay.
Kim Smith, I just have a question.
I'm sorry, can fully explain, one of the problems are, and one of the reasons there were some complaints, uh, at the previous meeting, some of the stuff is delivered onto pallets and end up just sitting out there until they get a chance to, to bring it all in. Biggest problem he has, he's deliveries, they literally are all over the floor, so he's got customers while he's trying to stock shelves. So this will facilitate being able to put it away from customers, uh, un- unpackage it, and then as needed, bring it into the retail area.
David, the question that I have is, so, um, I'm looking at the footprint of the property line, so the proposed addition, is that currently, is that parking there currently?
Currently, that's almost all grass, or if you can see, uh, maybe it's not clear on that sub scale, but there's actually an existing garage building that will be, will be torn down, so we're-
Right, even the fire plan.
Correct.
We have called pictures of the existing property.
Okay.
They were by, yeah. They just get rid of the trailer, Steve Baylen, code enforcement, they did get rid of the trailer, the pallets, the second pallets and everything.
There previously was a licensed car that was remote as well.
Yeah, it did.
Mona, you got multiple copies?
Yeah, oh, I'm sorry.
Uh, did you guys knock it out here?
I need one.
See, I was just following up on your questions. Do the homeowner need to be notified about this?
They were.
They were, so they're all notified, and they're all, no.
Well, you're gonna have to open.
When you open public hearing, I believe, I believe representatives.
So the garage is coming down?
The Santa's again, for both of them, foundry is five feet between, uh, property lines, or?
Also with the foundry, yes.
If, the rear yard.
Five, rear yards, what, ten feet? So they did move it up. Originally, they were gonna put a little walkway in the, in the building, but instead they got rid of that and moved it up, and then they added green space to the right side, and give them twenty percent green space, so they did not need to get buried.
That kind of float is, that's where the, uh, resident is, correct, it would be.
On that side.
Yes. The one that, I guess.
Yeah.
They were
Following up on your.
Anybody have any more question?
Oh, yeah, in, in terms of the storage, uh, Jared Buckner. In terms of the storage, and I don't know if code enforcement is gonna ask, do is there any need for any kind of like sprinkler system or anything?
No, it's not that big. Not that big, a four thousand square feet.
And your hours of operation are, are gonna stay the same?
Yes.
Okay, and what are they currently?
Nine day.
Seven days a week?
Yeah.
Nobody has any questions? So then I will, they assign a motion to open the floor for public hearing.
I'll make the motion to open up the floor.
Zambran second.
Hey, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? The motion carried, so we have the floor open. Uh, for any residents may have questions?
Is there anybody here to speak for or against this project?
No. Okay, so nobody is here. Do you make comments for the public hearing, so I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing? Motion to close.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? Motion carried, so we have to do the seeker form, right?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so, everybody see the seeker form in their packet?
Uh huh.
Okay, so, any questions? Did everybody have a chance to look at it, or do they have such different?
Yep.
Yeah, I do have a quick question. On the seeker, the first page, on the seeker form, page one?
Mm-hmm.
Um, I think it might be a typo, which says project location. It has eleventh five nine zero Abbott Road. I thought it was fifteen ninety.
Yes, it is, that's why, just like you're coming in the full flip.
So it's a one that should be there, so.
There's clearly this three, one, and then, okay.
Clark from Development, and again, just to reiterate, negative declaration is a good thing, that means that if you, if you choose to accept the negative declaration, that means that the project itself is not causing any, um, undue harm, uh, to the area people, environment, et cetera.
Thank you. So is that our only? It wasn't a question, it was a, a good catch. Is, is that the only thing? No questions? Okay, so I will entertain a motion to approve the negative declaration.
Make a motion, Mona Abdullah.
Zambran second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carried. And I will now entertain a motion to approve the site plan. Friend motion?
Mona Abdullah, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Jared Buckner.
Okay, so we have one opposition, Mr. Buckner, and so we have can't count, so five. Yes, so motion carries five to one, thank you.
Well said.
All right, yes. And I'm not sure if you-
Steve Baylen, code enforcement, we just need, uh, sort of real drawings and then, uh, permit and stuff, right? Yes, so, if you, you got my number, give me that.
Thank you. And the next item on the agenda is Omar Elvari from seventeen sixty-nine Abbott Road wants to open a restaurant?
Yes, ma'am.
Your Mr. El-
No, I'm his representative and his partner, he's overseas, and he asked me to show up first.
Okay.
Scott, code enforcement, Steve has updated pictures of the property.
Pictures from today. And where are these, um, okay. What are these on the box?
Oh, those, no, sorry, about this thing.
Yeah, but, no, I gave him all that.
Oh, okay.
Yes, you have an option.
Yeah, it's one. Yeah, the weeds are overgrown right now, and, uh, there's a trailer, a camper trailer there on the corner of the property.
Right.
Uh, that will be taken care of as soon as possible. I, I tried contacting the property owner. Oh, so, so I'm sorry, so, uh, he hasn't informed, but there's somebody upstairs, and they're, we're responsible for, and I think they're currently moving out. Uh, I think we have a file, or we guys, wherever, we took the, uh, resident, we were in court for a long time, and the judge gave them more time. So, we, there's nothing we can do about that, but as far as like the restaurant area is very clear and is ready to go, we're hoping to open on the twenty-fifth of this month, and we were looking forward to putting up the signs. So you need, once you got approval, you would need business registration through clerk's office. That takes some time.
Hey, Baylen, code enforcement tool, hey, are you gonna get rid of the trailer?
Yeah, of course, yeah, we just, we don't wanna violate the resident, so.
Yeah, you know, I get it, you gotta stop there for thirty days or whatever, something like that. Uh, Clark from Development, I'd like to just clarify something for you. First of all, great, congratulations. Just wanna make sure, 'cause you said you wanna open very quickly, so assuming things go the way you want them to go this evening, you then have to complete a business registration.
We will come, we understand the regulation.
And, and it'll, it'll goes through several departments, so the reason I mention it is not to beat that, uh, you know, that order, so to speak, you will not be open by the twenty-fifth.
I understand, I, I was sure.
It's your wish, I get it, you, you will not be open by the twenty-fifth, but it'll move quickly, is the faster you move, the faster.
Yes, and it was, it was previously, uh, 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 active, active business, it was a bar.
Yes.
Pretty sure you guys work, we have private parking, we're not gonna be blocking nobody's fence or nobody's view, and, uh, we just put some, you know, some touches into the place to make it look nice, and I understand we're gonna have to do the registration and all that forms, we're just hoping to solve the issue with the resident that's currently there, and we can move on.
Just wanna make sure you understood the time.
We have everything in place, and we'll-
Move as fast as we can.
I appreciate that.
Sure.
Kim Smith, um, I have a question, so has, have you contacted the health department? Do you have your permit, or no?
As far as, uh-
A health permit to operate this restaurant? So even though it's not open?
No, no, we have the, you know, the beginning of, of operation, but we have to, I just, I was told we have to get the people from the zone first, and then I think we have, we registered a business, then they send in, the health department sends their people to perform everything.
Okay.
Jared Buckner? Congratulations.
Thank you.
So, I'm a name, I live across the street from here, so I'm glad that's something.
Any of you guys are welcome, once we open, any of you guys will come for, it's gonna be special, special, so it's in there, special treats.
We're gonna hold you for that.
And no problem, anytime.
So I'm glad you come here, but my question is a couple of questions, uh, first and foremost, like the last, uh, individual that came, garbage disposal, um, there's a, a, a big role and problem over here.
Yeah.
And so I'm, this, the cleanliness and everything, have you mapped out the garbage?
We, we're mapping out, we're working with a dumpster country, uh, uh, company, we have, uh, two big dumpsters. Uh, we've had businesses before, we've had restaurants before, so we're familiar with the business and what it takes to maintain a place, uh. Most importantly is for us, and for the service we're trying to provide to the people, so we're gonna care more than the city's gonna care, because we want people coming back, and whatever goes wrong is gonna affect us more long term, so as far as cleaning, that's our top priority in the service that we're doing to the, to the community, is our top priority as well.
Um, hours of operation?
Mm-hmm, hours of operation, we're shooting, we're working to work with the city regulation, I'm hoping nine to twelve, but I know it's gonna be somewhere nine to eleven.
Okay, nine to twelve noon?
I know, night.
Midnight.
Midnight, okay. For two hours. That's why I had breakfast.
Breakfast in front, yeah.
Exactly, and, um, uh, I didn't realize that it was a tenant here, I was gonna ask, that was one of my questions. What's going on upstairs? Would that be a place, um, when was the nightcap, you could go up there and dine? So I don't know what it looks like.
Honestly, we're, we're, we're testing the downstairs first, to see how that goes, 'cause that's a pretty big place, and hopefully we have potential future plant as the city expands and we get more, people are, we see the numbers are increasing that we need to move for expansion. You probably guys will see us again, and we're leaving that as like a open idea space of, as far as somebody living there, we're hoping not to, 'cause we don't wanna affect anybody that's gonna be living there, as far as the smell, the inconvenience, the parking, the noises, so that won't be a problem, but we are shooting in the future to keep that as an open idea, to expand or to make it to something else, depending on how the city maps out in the future.
Awesome, good. Last question, and signage, I'm pretty sure you're gonna-
Yeah, that's what, that's what we're hoping to put the sign up, so we get the people at least to have an idea, there's gonna be a spot there.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Now, what day, I heard you saying, um, nine AM to midnight, but seven days a week?
Seven days a week, yeah, we have, uh, you know, delivery, pickup, dining.
And with you, Kim Smith, um, now with you doing your renovations, um, does it include you installing an ancil system?
Everything's already done, as far as like-
Okay, so the ancil, the ancil system you had put in?
Everything is up to code, everything is up to-
No, I'm saying you put it in?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
The ancil system is, there's, it's a whole fire suppression unit. It's, it's built in the ceiling, and usually when a restaurant, it, um, a lot of times when they close, that comes out, 'cause that's a valuable
Right.
piece.
I believe, uh, inspector's been inside too, he came and went, I forgot his name, honestly, gentleman.
Well, we've not been in a while.
I, yeah.
Last time we were in there, you were just putting the booths and stuff?
Yeah.
So, yeah, so part of the new business registration is like-
You were gonna have to go through that step again, like- Before you get your business registration anyways.
So, yeah, so, Steve Baylen, code enforcement, to get your business registration, we also do inspection, code enforcement, fire marshal, he's gonna make sure you have your ancil system and all that stuff. You know, proper.
And it was a previous owned by, uh, it was already, was a restaurant and a bar, so, it wasn't so much we had to do, it was more like decor than any, uh, installments, I think.
Zambran, here, just another question clarifying, there's not gonna be a tenant upstairs?
Hopefully not, we're working on to keep this tenant out, it's gonna be a nightmare without a tenant there, so whether, what the future holds, I can't promise, you know?
So once this tenant's out, you don't want anyone else to-
Tenants up there, to be honest, yeah.
Okay.
Mona Abdullah, um, there's a restaurant in La Juana and Tiquagua, where there's a restaurant, but also a slaughterhouse. Um, is this just gonna be a restaurant?
It's a restaurant. Just cook in, prepare.
So there won't be any lambs in my backyard?
No, no, they're not running around.
Any vegetarian food? This, that'd be fun, is that?
Yeah.
I'm a vegetarian, just-
Our menu, our menu is gonna hold a huge variety, diverse, you know, preferences.
There is, every time we go out, she's looking for.
Add a little of those opposite of that.
How many, um, employees you plan on having?
To start, five to eight. Yeah, but I, I, I really, really have a good feeling about this, I feel like in the future it's gonna hold up to at least minimum twenty employees. Okay, future, I see, I see the way the market is shifting, and I see like, I see the business growing within the next ten to fifteen years.
You have a lot of space there.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a good place.
But if you do utilize up there, for dining areas, but-
That's why we really jumped on that, as soon as we saw ourselves, I am.
A real big house.
I like the space, if it's two, with no buildings around it, and the parking is convenient.
Abdullah, is your name Monir?
Yes.
Okay, so are you bringing Krave King to?
He's gonna be one of the main chefs over there, we're gonna have some people coming too, but he's still gonna be operating over here to our Krave King, as long as we don't have to stop that. We're gonna taste of over there. But it's gonna be at a huge, huge, bigger scale.
I'm going in that corner.
Any other questions?
Nope. Did you ask my trailer?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. So if nobody has any questions, I- So if nobody has any questions, I can entertain a motion to open up the public hearing.
Motion to open it? Zambran second.
Okay, any opposed? All in favor?
I.
Okay, all right, we can open up the public hearing.
Are they here for anything?
I don't know.
Are you gentlemen here to speak for or against this project or?
No, oh, okay, all right, so there's no one here to, um, make comments during the public hearings, so I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Zambran motion, Fran second.
All in favor?
I.
All, any opposed? Motion carried, and I'll entertain a motion to approve the site plan for seventeen sixty-nine Abbott. All in favor?
I.
Any opposed? Motion carried. You can do with these, follow the instructions of these gentlemen.
Yes, for sure.
Business registration, room two fifteen, sooner you get a deep side, the outside, sooner you get started, sooner you get it done.
Okay, so, uh, we were looking to put up a sign, is there a specific permit for that?
Yeah.
Okay, business registration first, I'm, I'm trying to scaffold enforcement, maybe complete business registration first. Thank you guys.
Maybe I'll get a temporary sign from it, saying like coming soon or something like that.
Yeah, we want, yeah.
You might put up the permanent signs.
Thank you guys. See you guys again.
Good luck.
We don't have anything else.
Anybody have anything else? All right. Zambran. Are you, did you need something, sir?
Yeah, I just had to ask a question. About, uh,